Need to perfect and approve the agenda.
So move.
Support.
Motion with support, under any discussion? Roll call.
Crowder?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Motion carried, consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support. Motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through 10, which are amendments from regular city council meeting on August 19th, 2020. Payment to Ideal Ready Mix Company, payment to municipal emergency services, payment to Ferguson Water Works, consider payment to embellishments and design, payment to Dave Bazin Electric, a payment to advanced traffic control, payment to MG Daily Construction Company, the clerk's monthly financial report for July, and the claims list as presented in the amount of $110,794.02. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Motion carried. Staff reports. Dan?
I got a couple of things tonight. First one, the lot at 314 West Burlington Avenue where that house was tore down. Working with the Great River Housing Trust Fund on getting a house put up there. Originally, we had talked about giving them part of the 310 lot in order to make that large enough to put a decent house on. It's gonna take a long time to do a subdivision and all that. So they suggested maybe we give them the whole lot and then they give us an easement so we can take care of that, take care of our ditch through there. The plus side to that would be that puts the whole lot back on the tax rolls and...
It gets it off the city's ownership. And it should work for our purposes as well, so I'm just throwing it out there for now just to let you know that we're, that's the way we're leaning. I've got a email in to the attorneys to see just how that would work to work, to do it that way. But that's kind of the direction we're leaning in order to get that house built fairly quickly. I know they were, the last time we talked, they were looking for a little bit of LMI money for that. But in the, in the range of what the rehab program we're putting together, be in the range of that amount. So a lot less than they were asking for before. And then on the Cartel property, we've got, they've been given, they've been notified, they've been given till the 10th to get it cleaned up. We've already scheduled the contractor to clean it up on the Monday, the 14th, if it's not cleaned up by then. I talked with Lynn Cartel today. Somebody was interested, the person that's interested in buying it was looking to clean it up. All the quotes and stuff he got were, were well above that. It looks like the most expedient way to do that is to have us do it and we'll get it right on the taxes. And when that property changes hands, we'll get our money back. And that's all I have.
Do they have anything for Dan? Eldon, you're representing Jess. Guy ain't going on. Do they have any questions, Eldon? Or Sean? There he is.
New week, same stuff, nothing really to report, no.
Anybody have anything for Sean? Kelly? Anything going on? Leslie? Okay. Kathy?
Aye.
Oh Mike, I forgot all about him. I skipped over Public Works. Gotta speak up. Come over here, because you're hard to hear.
I just got the third quote back late this afternoon, so I didn't have time to get it in for this agenda. But one of them already backed out. So we have two of them, the guy that paints the pool and then a company out of Texas that works for the slide company that manufactures the slides. It's a gel coat that goes on. And those two quotes are ranging from $23,300 to $25,400, right in that range. I'll get that put in the next council meeting so you have an idea what we're talking to get. All three slides painted and the poles on the play structure that are faded out too, where the water's up on them.
Just curious, have you reached out to like Pizzazz to see who they use?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And one quote here, this is the guy that just went back and repaired everything from Pizzazz that fell apart from the last company.
Yeah.
And the other guy actually painted the slides in Keakuck Pool a year and a half or two years ago. And I talked to the Public Works Director down there that now works for the City of Fort Madison, and he said they did a good job, so. Second thing, I was wanting to address a couple of speed limits in town. See some input or what people thought. On Mount Pleasant, right now, it's from Lowe's headed west. It's 35 mile an hour till the entrance to Walmart. And at that point, it goes to 45 mile an hour out past the hospital and then the 55. If we're putting in a crosswalk at the college for all those students because we're worried about their safety, I would like to move the speed limit 35 all the way to 406. That's 10 mile an hour less. And I know we have plenty of accidents at fast break constantly with the fire department, police being there. And every time I try and turn into Menards, somebody runs right up in the back of my truck because they're running 45. You have a trailer court with a lot of elderly people trying to get out. And then my work zone issue of how far, because the higher the speed limit, the more road I have to close down whenever I have an issue out there with water mains or something. So I was wondering if we could just see your input or whatever and see if we could do something about changing the ordinance and just making that 35 past that crosswalk we're putting in at the college, just to slow people down. I think if we're worried about those kids out there too, an extra 10 mile an hour slower there and at fast break, may stop a few accidents and help the safety of those kids. And the other one is Mount Pleasant here. It's 35 to Johnny Johnson's out there by North Gear. And then it goes to 45. And my work zone issue we had out there to do it by OSHA regulations, I had to close, I would have had to close the road clear past Gear Avenue down along Dairy Brothers. My, get my 400 feet. Where if we drop it, keep it there down to 35 too until we get to our shop, then that main or any work I'm doing there, I can shut, I can shut my work zone down to just 200 feet on each side of it and restrict it. I was thinking if we could just leave that 35 to the shop and then 45 out to the UPS lights and then let them go up to 55 to go on out, out to the truck stop is what I was thinking about. I didn't know what input or questions or what anybody thought about trying to change the ordinance.
Say that one more time on Mount Pleasant. Where would it go up to 45, all the way at the shop?
At our shop, yeah. Right now at our shop, it jumps to 55.
Right.
So from North Gear to our shop, if we could just leave that 10 mile an hour lower like it is all the way down Mount Pleasant from West Burlington Avenue all the way, it would just be 35 to our shop at Worthington Road. And then let it go 45 out to the intersection at UPS at the freeway. And then from there, they can go up to 55 because you're getting out away from everybody. And that's all I got.
Guys, think. Isn't there somewhere though where it turns to 30?
That's when you're coming eastbound on Mount Pleasant. When you come up the hill from Dairy Brothers, it's 30 mile an hour on our side, but the other side going out is 35. And I don't know why that is, that's just, it's in the ordinance too that way. And I'm not sure why that, one side's 30 and one side's 35, I do not know.
Make it consistent to be both sides.
No, I, I think it's 30.
Is it 30 from West Burlington?
30 from West Burlington Avenue all the way westbound until you get...
St. Mary's, maybe? Around that range?
That's 602, I think it is. Right past 602, West Mount Pleasant, then it's at 35.
Okay, so this end, this end is 30?
It goes to 30 on both sides.
At the same spot, okay, top of the hill then?
Right.
So we're only 35 from one side of the hill till you get up to the other side and then it goes to 45 then at Gear, so.
I'd like to see some, talking about especially out, out near the hospital and Menards and those areas, just some data on how many traffic accidents have happened out in there and how many speeding tickets have been given in there too, if they're going out and above that even. Get Jesse's input on that and see some data. Is there a way when you're, when you're during, setting up a work zone and you know you're gonna be in that area, can we temporarily decrease in that area?
Yeah, I have signs for work zones to slow it down for those areas.
I was saying, you know, if the concern on your part is the, the OSHA requirements and completely understand that, if you were gonna be out there, could we temporarily go down to the 30 or 35 for that week or two posted?
We can, it's just that, that's another intersection at North Gear, that offset. I mean, I've, I've seen rear ends knocked out of trucks and it's just another bad place that there's lots of wrecks. We can get Jesse to get that data there at Gear, Gear and Mount Pleasant too.
Mike, didn't you tell me that even if we lowered it during the construction, the OSHA regulations apply to the, the normal speed limit? So even if you lowered that at the construction sign, the OSHA would still...
To shrink my zone, you're right. It goes by the standard speed limit of what it's marked there, so.
Okay, so that does not solve it.
I can't legally go from 45 down to 25 in my work zone. I mean, I can, but my, it won't shrink my work zone. Yeah, my signage still has to be 400 feet both ways.
Okay.
That, that was the catch. Thanks, Dan, I forgot about that. That's why I wanted to reduce them to 10 mile an hour if we could.
And how often in a year would you be out there?
Been out there for three main breaks, probably within a year almost out there. I don't know how many times, I can't answer that.
Okay. I didn't know if that was a regular issue when you're out?
And we're doing a lot of patching out there. Probably at least once a month, we're patching those seams and bad spots. So we're out there patching a lot too, but until we get that. And I don't know, Dan, how far out is that project?
I'm not sure, just...
Couple years?
At least a year.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to see more data. My first glance is, I think the waiting all the way to the UPS turn in to go to 55 just seems odd to me to wait that long. But I understand taking the, the speed limit down till you hit the shops does sound good.
If we went a little farther west than what we are at North Gear before they went to 45, because that's the main problem, then I don't have to shut another road down when I got an issue. I mean, we could just move that sign a couple hundred feet and then that would move me where I don't have to shut down a second road when I do work out there. We don't have to go that far, no.
What all, what do we have to do to be able to change that?
So the ordinance change?
The ordinance change, okay.
Well, I agree with Andy, I think that he, I'd like some more data. And then I think a couple of council meetings ago, I asked Jesse to get that speed tracker, sign how fast the speeds were going on Broadway. And I don't know, Eldon, has, has Jesse done that? I haven't seen any reports on that, you know, because people, they like to speed no matter where you're at. So I think it would be wise for us to have that. We have to rent it out, borrow it, I'm not sure what we have to do. But I think we should probably put it on Broadway for a while because we got kids going to school in Ramsey and then Mount Pleasant and just get a feel for how many, how fast these people are going. Coming up to the council meeting tonight, there was a guy in a little black Toyota. He acted like he was going to a fire. I mean, it was ridiculous. I'm like, huh. But, you know, I just think that we need to get that thing and place it around in certain areas and see how fast people are really going.
Well, that thing doesn't record. That just tells you how fast you're going.
Well, I know, but it gives them an idea like, holy crap, I didn't know.
Yeah, it does that, but I mean, if you're trying to get data, you're not gonna get any data. It doesn't, it doesn't record data.
Well, even, even with that, I mean, people would slow down if they see it.
Yeah, the sign is good, we used to put it up at the schools. I mean, we can get the, the sign from regional planning.
But it's, you can't get any data off of that.
Well, and maybe we have a couple of reserve officers set out with their guns.
There you go. What we could do is we could put some counters down to see what, how much traffic is on the roads.
Do that too.
I guess my only question on that is what would we be looking to change based on that data? Because are you gonna lower from 25 to 20 based on that? It sounds to me like more of an enforcement issue of there are people speeding on that. We're all aware of it, we all see it every day. We just need to make sure that our police are aware, we want to make sure that that gets handled and taken care of.
Real quick on the agency. I'd have to tend to agree with you on the 35. If we are gonna spend the money for a crosswalk for safety purposes, I, I'd suggest that we do the same thing with the speed. I mean, knock it down to the 35 like you suggested. We're, we're putting that in there for safety purposes, crossing back and forth, so why not lower the speed for more safety purposes?
Yeah, I just think that would help at Walmart, Menards. Menard's Storage is pretty busy, the cars going in and out, the trailer court.
That speed's been 45 for the longest time because, you know, of the road there.
And now it's, like I said, there wasn't a Walmart there, there wasn't a Menards there. It's, it's just built up with more and we're still letting them travel faster. And that's my point exactly too, if, if we're putting in that traffic crossing for the kids out there that worried about their safety, I don't think it would hurt to lower that to 10 mile an hour till we get past that to where you turn on to 406 and then let them go up to their 55.
Well, I don't know, some of those tall basketball players probably ought to get glasses as well. They can't jump over my car. Well, it's food for thought and do, we need to get the statistics on it like Andy requested.
Okay. Anything else for Mike? Thanks. Kathy, you got anything going on?
Yeah, I have three things. The first one, I just want to remind everyone that this weekend, there's the car show at the Westland Mall parking lot, the south end. And it's being sponsored by Detailing Solutions. From 10 till 3, there's going to be a DJ in cars, so there's something to do for Labor Day weekend. Also, I want to talk just for a second about our Trees project. So we're going to apply for a grant from Trees Forever and Alliant Energy. And we were thinking that because of all the destruction to the cities in Iowa from the derecho, all the destruction to the trees, we are not going to apply this fall, we're waiting till spring because it is a competitive grant. And so we'll apply in the spring. And if, if we get the grant, then we'll be able to plant in the fall. And if people would like more information about this project, you can Google branching out Trees Forever. And also, we've got a pretty good committee put together. We'd love to have more people so that anybody that is interested in joining us, you can either call me or email me, the information's on our website. And the third thing is, I've been going around talking to some of the small businesses in West Burlington lately, just to find out what their experience has been dealing with the city and how it's going. And one thing that has come up is our sign ordinance. And a couple of them would really like, really, really would love to have a Finn sign. So what I would ask is maybe the council, we could talk about it. I maybe put it on the agenda for next time, our sign ordinance, because the Finns are right now not allowed in West Burlington. And so if we could put that on the agenda, then we can all talk about it and see what we think. So that is about all. And the last time it was updated, I think was about five years ago, the sign ordinance. So that's all I have.
Andy?
Just to piggyback on that, I wouldn't mind looking at that whole ordinance and not just the Finn sign if we, if we do that. There's a few things I'd like to look at and kind of see how other cities are doing too. So I'd, I'd enjoy looking at the full ordinance on that.
Voice?
Nothing.
Grace? Al?
Good.
Okay. Anyone wishing to address the council matters that are not on the agenda tonight? We'll go to a public hearing. I'm gonna open a public hearing to discuss the status of funding for community health centers of southeastern Iowa. The project is being funded through a community development block grant provided by the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And did we receive any written comments?
No.
Anyone wishing to make a comment during the public hearing? There are, with this public hearing, we are required to discuss about nine different bullet points. And Mr. Kemp has provided the answers to about five of those. And I'm gonna start with number one, what is the need for the CDBG project? And as a result of the COVID-19, like other healthcare providers, Community Health Center Southeast Iowa has to, had, has had to implement a number of additional infection control measures. This is applicable throughout our five healthcare clinic sites, but it is especially significant in our dental program, which supports seven dentists and seven dental hygienists, using 29 dental operatories and four sterilization rooms at the three dental sites, West Burlington, Keakuck, Columbus City. By the nature of dental care exposure to COVID-19 virus is the highest among Community Health Center, other healthcare services, et cetera, and example, primary medical and behavioral health. The second question that was asked, what is the description of the CDBG-funded project and activities? The infection control equipment listed in Community Health Center, CDBG request is heavily reflective of the dental care COVID-19 infection risk. Dental care has high risk because dental procedures produce aeration, which parentheses airborne microdroplets that can spread virus in the dental treatment space. The request for Iowa Economic Development approved CDBG funding is to use CDBG grant funds to purchase portable surgical clean decontamination units. This includes 29 units, six large, 23 small, needed to provide additional air decontamination to dental operatories, dental sterilization rooms, and waiting reception areas at the three dental clinics operated by Community Health Center at a total cost of $70,066. What is the amount of CDBG funds for the project? The total Iowa Economic Development Agency funding approved is $70,066. What are the estimated amount of CDBG assistance that will benefit low and moderate income persons? Community Health Center mission is to provide access to high quality, affordable primary medical, dental, and behavioral healthcare within the resources available via federal and state funding and patients' payments. One measure meeting this mission is to, is the demographic data on who is receiving care at Community Health Centers, five clinical sites, and three primary programs while the services are available to anyone. Federal poverty level is 92% at 200% of the FPL or below. FPL stands for... Federal poverty level. Health insurance coverage is 8% uninsured and 50% Medicaid. The location of the project activities are at 1706 West Agency Road in West Burton, Iowa, 1618 Main Street, Keakuck, Iowa, and 2409 Spring Street, Columbus City, Iowa. And are there any relocation that will have to take place as a result of the CDBG project? No residents will need to be relocated as a result of the CDBG project. The next three questions are pertaining to the city. What is the city contact information for residents in contact with concerns or complaints regarding the project? This is Dan Gifford, City Administrator, West Burton City Hall, 122 Broadway Street, West Burton, Iowa, 52655. Phone number is 319-752-5451. And the email is giffordd@westburton.org. Eight bullet, number eight bullet point is community development and housing needs of low to moderate persons in the city and any planned or potential activities to address these needs. Some housing stock needs repair or rehab. The city's developing a housing rehab project for low to moderate income households. Are there other community development and housing needs and any planned or potential activities to address these needs? At this time, there are no other needs or plans. That is a requirement for the CDBG, the federal part of it. Anyone wishing to make comment, council? Mr. Kemp, you want me to comment?
Small, mild, little detail, just interim. What's a decontamination unit? Simple, it's a box with HEPA filter and ultraviolet light. Ultraviolet light actually changes the ability of the virus to attach to other, other cells. So that's kind of the simple. It's not very sophisticated but very effective. There's multiple other things that we've done. We have different types of vacuums that are at the chair side of patients, those have been added. And then in addition for our staff, layers of PPE, protective equipment that they haven't formally done. So a normal dental procedure, the provider will have to be double gowned, gloved. They have an N95 mask, which is, I don't see anybody with it on, but it's, it's a lot more intensive in terms of its weight and ability to absorb particles. Then they have goggles over that, then they have a face shield over that. So that's the normal, so we're doing many things to protect also the patients, the covering of the patient during those procedures. The other things is we reduce some of the higher speed. So if some dental involves speed at which you do drilling, et cetera, those have been reduced and just actually are on hold at this point. That's kind of detail that I, that may or may not be of interest. As long as I could have your attention, just one, the things that I don't get an opportunity to speak very often publicly about the positive things. One of the things that we do is what Community Health Centers get rated in terms of clinical performance. If, if you were thinking about what we sell, what do we sell? We sell that individuals get improvement in their health status. So we're evaluated every year by the federal government in terms of our ability to do that, in terms of how many of our chronically ill patients, such as those with hypertension, high blood pressure, those patients with diabetes, those patients with depression, those patients with asthma. And they compare us to the other 1400 Community Health Centers. So overall, in terms of all of our preventive and chronic disease management, we're in the top 20, 10% of Community Health Centers in terms of the clinical outcomes for our patients, what's their actual experience. And we're in the top 1% for those in terms of heart health, primarily around our hypertension control. So I have, I feel really good about that because that is the core of what we're supposed to be providing. It's not just visits. We actually are changing the health status of our patients in a significant way. So that's something, this doesn't, maybe it doesn't seem so germane to the topic, but it really is who we are and what we are. So that's a core piece. What we're doing with dental, why dental? Because part of the research historically shown, you have one body, it's one system. If there's an infectious process in the oral cavity in the mouth and within your teeth, it's gonna have an impact on the body, oftentimes cardiovascular disease. It affects even our diabetic patients. So oral health and even with pediatric patients, they're now discovering the interface between poor cavities, infectious process with school age, especially the younger children, and school performance. I mean, this is pretty, pretty much hard data that supports that. So what we're doing in dentistry is not just doing some of the traditional things what you would label as fillings. We're really trying to reduce the impact on the overall disease pathology in our patients. I could go on, but that's not what you want me to do. I'd open it up to any other comments or questions.
Anyone have any comments, questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Plus, thank you for all the tough support that this council has done.
I might add too, we have to, once they have the funds spent and send the paperwork to Leslie to be reimbursed, we will have to have another hearing and just kind of go over this one more time. That's just another one of the requirements of Iowa Economic Development and the CDBG.
With that, I'll close the public hearing. Go to new business. Item number one is to consider payment to Snyder Associates for engineering services. The landfill lift station is $9,100.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carried. I have number two is to consider resolution awarding a contract for the south lift station replacement project. And the bid for that came in at, the low bid was $1,064,000. And Tom's Backhoe Service.
Actually, Hans, I think we're not going to do the bid alternate.
Okay.
Is that right? Mike, could you talk to Rod about that? I don't think we're going to do the bid alternate, so it'd be more like 999, whatever that is. We don't need the crane because the company that works on our pumps brings this crane on their trucks. So unless Rod has a real problem with not getting that, Mike and I are thinking we don't need that. That was why we had it separate in the first place, so we could omit it if we needed to.
I will motion to approve the base bid of $999,000 to Tom's Backhoe Service.
Support. Motion with support. Any discussion?
Well, I know we have to go with the low bid, but I was hoping we would keep our business local.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think if it's close, you have some leeway, but this is significantly higher, so we really don't have any choice.
Is this a reliable?
Ben did some due diligence on this. They've done pretty similar work in some other places and it all checks out. It just so happens that they're real hungry right now and that's why they're coming clear down from McBrainerd, Minnesota, is they're looking for work pretty hard and that was why we got such a good bid. That's why they're so much under the other ones, is they really wanted to get it bad, which bodes well for us. We got a pretty good deal, I think.
Any others? Discussion? Roll call.
I'm sorry, who did the motion in the second?
Andy made the motion and Roger second.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carried. I have number three is to consider payment for season excavating landscaping work for work completed on the Agency Road Sewer Repair Project in the amount of $7,449.38.
Still move?
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? This closes us out, right?
Yes.
Accepting the project.
Yeah, this was the retainers that we held to make sure that didn't settle. So we held it a little bit longer than usual and it all checks out, so we're good to go to pay them out.
Roll call.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. I have number four is consider purchase of an air relief elf and back flush kit from Jim Jolly Sales for $2,385.60.
Still move? Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? I never heard of a jolly guy working on a sewer.
As jolly as you get, working on a sewer.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Motion carried. I have number five is to consider resolution approving annual street finance report for fiscal 2020.
Still move?
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. I have number six is to consider resolution requesting reimbursement from the Iowa COVID-19 Government Relief Fund. And as you can see in the memo, we could possibly get up to $68,685.37 based on the expenditures that we've incurred.
Is that expenditure for like all the glass panels, all the sanitizer?
Well, that stuff we're running, that stuff we're running through FEMA. Basically, on the Iowa one, we're basically using that for public safety wages that they're allowing. And that was enough to max out the full amount. In fact, it's over the full amount, so.
That's through the state. The state received a certain amount of funds appropriated to the cities.
Could you explain to me then, some public safety wages, what did they do in response to COVID that accumulated the cost?
The state, in the state grant, they said for ease of calculation, use 25% of your wages. So that's what we did. So you don't really have to prove anything. They just figured that 25% of public safety went to COVID.
Budgeted wages for last.
Of your budgeted wages for last year, so. That was their, that was their calculation.
But I guess just to say it, I'm going to end up voting yes on it just because it's our money anyway. We paid it in taxes anyway, so if they want to give it back to us a different way, that's fine. But that's kind of ridiculous that, I mean, to my knowledge, you don't have any expenses on public safety and.
Yeah. It's one of those things, they didn't want to, I think they didn't want to go through all the paperwork of trying to prove that. So they had, you know, a lump sum from the federal government to dole out, so they just did it the easiest and quickest way, so. I can't explain it either. I completely agree that it makes no sense, but that's what we're presented with.
Well, it's your pleasure. It's got to be a resolution.
All motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Sure.
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carried. I have number seven is to consider purchase of an emergency alert notification system. There's a $3,300 setup fee and a $2,500 annual fee.
Yep, and that's every year. So basically, what the software allows is allows Katie to put a circle of where they're going to do the work. And so it only alerts the people necessary. And we also chose this service because a lot of people in our community are elderly and may not get text messages. So this one does voice as well. So it would do a voice alert. Basically, it's up to you guys whether you think it's worth $2,500 a year to get this service or not to alert citizens of hydro flushing or all the other stuff that we could put out on it, such as water main breaks. Mike's probably knows a little more of what he could put in it, but.
Straight order.
Yep.
What, what is, the county has a system. What does that do? Does that alert everybody or does that?
It has the same capabilities. It was more expensive, which is why I didn't choose them personally. And they also, I don't know what it would cost to integrate. I never asked them with our current system to bring over the phone numbers that are currently in there for the accounts.
I know there's, people could sign up for it.
Yes, and that's that way, too, on this software. So I'll have a spot on the website that they can also go sign up in case the number on their account is different from the one they want to be alerted on. And we'll obviously have to print that on water bills and stuff to alert people that we have that service, but basically, that would be how it would go. They would fill in their address and then they would put the phone number and hit submit.
Who takes care of it for the county? Is it?
I thought it was emergency management.
I'm thinking.
Yeah, Gina.
Last, but I think it goes through their IT, though, to send it out.
Okay, I could ask Colin. I didn't think about asking Colin. Are you talking about maybe piggybacking on their service? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, if we're already paying for it somehow.
Yeah, might as well ask that question.
Okay.
And the other thing is, I know years ago, we looked into a reverse 911. And I don't think that ever happened, but, I mean, that's kind of similar. You could pick an area to.
To alert people.
To alert, just the reverse 911. They would dial your number because they already have it in the 911 system. And then they could pick an area to do it.
Well, I saw their system does voice, too. It had the option for voice. I don't know if county implements that. I would have to ask them and discuss that with them, if that's a feature you guys want to have on it. As far as integrating in with the current database we have now, that's also another discussion I would have to have. But we could also just tell our people to go sign up with that, too, instead of integrating it into the database. And then that way be more of an opt-in than a.
Why don't we hold off on this and see what?
Yeah, we could table this. I'll call Colin and see.
Talk with him first.
Okay, yeah, I can, we can table this and I'll talk with Colin and get back with you guys on what I find out.
I appreciate you looking this up and bringing options, though. I know this, some of this was in response to something I complained about, so I appreciate that the process is being looked at. But I'm with Hans on this. I think we had a few more options of what other people are doing. And then I do, as we were talking before the meeting, I think there might be some free ways we can do it that may not get everybody on the call side, but if these other options aren't available, we could maybe pick up 80, 85% of the people in town free.
Yeah, and it, I mean, there's also services that are low rate if you just want text messages. If you want to get the insured delivery, we could go that rate. And then we're only paying for every message we send. And it's like less than a penny per message, so.
I like that this does some of the FEMA alerts and those kind of things, but just being honest, most of that's built into most phones now.
Yeah.
You're already getting that one away. I'm not sure that the city needs to take that on, but I do like the jetting notification and those kind of things. If there's a way we can do that cheap or piggyback on another service.
Yeah, the main reason I was looking at this is because they would integrate in with the current database we would have. And every time Katie would enter a number, it would automatically. But we could also just do an opt-in and tell people, go here to sign up if you want to know about such and such information.
Right, okay.
I will check some things out and bring this back next.
Okay, yes, I will do that and I'll put it on the agenda next time and we'll bring it back.
Right, thanks, Brad.
Yes, no problem.
We may have your old business.
Hans, can I go out of sequence here because I missed my opportunity earlier?
Go for it.
Okay, I wanted to ask Dan, when he was talking about the West Burlington Avenue property, I was taking notes, but I know I didn't get. I just wondered, Dan, could you send us an email kind of detailing what you were talking about?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I had one quick question on an old business. On the Houston Street project, we had talked about bringing that up and talking about some sidewalk options. Is there a timing on that?
Yeah, we're just going to have to bring those estimates to, yeah, and decide which way you want to go. There's a lot of different options and.
Okay, perfect.
All right, anyone wishing to address council matters we didn't discuss tonight? Entertained motion adjourned.
Still move?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.